I call this meeting to order and apologize for being a minute late, two minutes late. Tuesday, September fourteenth already. Adoption of minutes first, or do our delegation first?
Adoption of minutes.
Adoption of minutes, please, for July twenty-third and August tenth. As ever, moved by Council Purcell, seconded by Deputy Warden Mennel. Any errors or omissions? If not, please call for the, I'll call for the vote.
Show of hands.
Show of hands. All in favor, please. That carries. Thank you. Ask if there's any disclosure, pecuniary interest, and general nature thereof. Noting none. Now we're at present.
Sorry, we do have a disclosure from Counselor Martin.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, in close session item number two. Thank you.
Okay, so noted and.
I was reading the thing and seeing when Mark was coming up.
All right. Presenting petitions, presentations, and delegations. At this time, I'd like to introduce Elgin County's new detachment commander, Inspector Mark Lucas. Please join me in welcoming Inspector Lucas. You're welcome here anytime, Mark.
Thank you very much.
Right now, I'd ask if we can get Mike Butler to come on up here. And I would ask, since we have our Police Services Board Chairman, if she would come up as well. Mike, behalf of Elgin County Council, I'd like to commend you on your great work as interim detachment commander of the Elgin County OPP. Your devotion to the safety and security of our community for over twenty years, well over twenty years, is admirable. We appreciate the support you provided to our community during the pandemic. I want to thank you for your significant contribution to the Elgin County OPP, for your dedicated public service. Throughout my years on council, I've had the pleasure of serving on committees with yourself, most recently the Community Safety and Well-Being Committee. Staff Sergeant Butler plans to stick around till next summer, so we're glad of that. On behalf of Elgin County Council, we want to present you with this Elgin County jacket as a token of our appreciation. Once again, thank you for, thank you for all that you do for our community through these challenging times. So, Mike, it's right there. Sally, present it to him. Go ahead.
Where are we? I will. Thank you very much.
Just one for one, yes.
Can we just get a quick photo?
Oh, yes, certainly.
Here's a trick.
Oh, you're right, it's back up.
That's great. All set. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Mark, again, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Actually, a very good way to start the meeting with some good news. A little background from Mark.
Oh, background from Mark, Paul, he's here.
Mark, can, can we ask you to brief us on your background? Let us get to know you a bit.
My background?
We actually heard lots of good things about you.
That's good. That's a good start. I've been with the OPP for twenty-five years. I started my career in Burlington, predominantly a traffic detachment. I've been transferred to Cambridge Detachment in two thousand and one to get closer to home because we're originally from Waterloo. During that time, I was a member of the Emergency Response Team, which is a public order containment team. And in two thousand and seven, I joined the attack rescue unit. TRU is our full-time hostage rescue team for the province, and I've been very fortunate to be promoted twice with the TRU team. And with my goal of being to come back to St. Thomas and stay close to home for once. So this was a fantastic opportunity for my family. We're happy to be here and very thankful to be working for Elgin County. So I look forward to remaining with my career, my last little bit here at Elgin. I have five years left and working very hard for the community, so I'm very happy to be here.
Welcome. Thank you for that. Enjoy the rest of your day, gentlemen.
Thanks, Warden.
Oh.
Just one thing I'd like to say. Mark went through an extremely rigorous thing for over a year to be promoted to the inspector and to be allowed to become our department commander. So it was, and he certainly wowed us when we were in on the interview. Julie and I were both present, and I had McCall, and we were thrilled to have him come. So we're really thankful to have you, Mark.
I'm very happy. Thank you very much.
As I said, great to start with good news. So move into committee. The hold, please. Motion by Jones, seconded by McPhail. All in favor. That carries. Thank you very much. Reports of council, outside boards and staff. Looks like I'm up first with my Warden's Activity Report and COVID-nineteen update. I'm assuming everyone has read, and I'll answer any questions if you have any. If there are no comments, questions, entertain the motion to adopt, please. By Martin, seconded by French. Again, call the vote. All in favor. Carries. Thank you. Counselor Jones, Health Recruitment Partnership Committee, request for additional funding.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. This is one of these good news, bad news. Good news is we're hiring at a very fast pace right now. It's unfortunately, the money that we've chipped in over the past year has run out, and we still have a couple hires to go possibly that we're looking at. So we're here asking for, to chip in another thirteen thousand, two hundred dollars. No, sorry, nineteen thousand, eight hundred dollars, sixty percent, for to support the hiring of another physician to take over Dr. Morrison's practice and possibly something, again, in the future that we're hoping to attract one more doctor for another. It's exciting to see that the health recruitment is working the way it's supposed to. Excited to see the hospital back in, joining in our meetings again, and also the home builders are back in participating in our meetings. And so exciting to see that, that the people that were there at the beginning are back in helping out and contributing to the meetings. So the ask is, at this time, nineteen thousand, eight hundred dollars, and with the possibility of coming back and asking for some more in a month or two. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Deputy Warden Mennel.
I'd move this in support of this, this program. Certainly, this last two years, we've had enormous pressure on our healthcare system, on our doctors, nurses, and public health. Certainly, nineteen thousand dollars is, is a lot of money, but when it comes to your healthcare, it's a small drop in the bucket. And this program has been very successful attracting doctors, and certainly this would help in getting more doctors into Elgin County, so I would move it.
Counselor Jones.
I should add that with the loan that is given to the doctors, if they're successful, they sign a four-year commitment to stay in Elgin County to, so I think it's well worth it. And I'm certain, once they hit that four years, they're probably here for a lot longer than that in most cases.
Further comments? Counselor McPhail.
How many doctors have you brought into Elgin-St. Thomas in the last year?
This one is the fourth one this year. It's the fourth one and possibly the fifth one.
Okay. That's a pretty good three of them.
Two in Elgin County, one in St. Thom, well, the next two are in St. Thomas. And I'm not sure if Dr. Robinson, if that was included. I didn't see her name, and that might have been from last year. Yeah, so.
There was a time when you couldn't hardly get anybody for any of them.
Well, at one point, wife and I were going to Dorchester for a doctor. Yeah, it's a whole lot better now.
Speaking for myself, I know that the public are going to encourage us to do this. I went through a similar thing ten years ago, eleven years ago. Family doctor just up and retired, and Bonnie Vowell, after about a year and a half, got me into Dutton. And actually, Doctor, and I wooed and laundered, I still have him, great doctor, but it's an awful feeling, you know? And if you have a good health, and that's when I first started having hip problems, you know, without a doctor, you're stranded. So I'm sure the public are going to be behind us, behind us on this. And unfortunately, our doctors are aging, and they've, they've served us well, but when they, you know, it comes time, so, great job. Duncan.
I'd second Dave Marshall.
Counselor Ketchblatt.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and forgive me if I ask this question, but where in the budget are we finding the money for this?
There are surplus operating funds to support this, though the direct budget line, we'd have to circle back and let council know where we would pull it from.
Okay, that's the question, just to make sure that there were sufficient funds available for this initiative.
Absolutely. Good question. We have a mover and seconder. Discussion finished. I'll call the vote. All in favor. Carries. Thank you. Appreciate that. Director of Community and Cultural Services, revisions to library branch hours. Morning, welcome, Brian.
Yeah, good morning, Mr. Warden, through you to county council. This report recommends revised hours at eight of our ten branches. Our pre-pandemic hours in the, so are outlined in the report. We have given these proposed hours careful consideration, factoring in aspects such as usage trends, paid feedback, staffing deployment, in alignment with current and future programming. The major outcome is that we are increasing morning hours to better meet community needs in terms of programming, needs of older adults and groups such as homeschoolers. However, evening hours are still available, and we'll continue, continually review our hours and will recommend adjustments as we've always done in the past. This is certainly not the first time in the last two to three years that we've aligned our hours, and we'll continue to do that. And what we're also doing within the confines of our budget and the staffing costs to support these hours. And I want to thank our supervisory team, which devoted a lot of time to analyzing what would better fit the community as we're coming out of the pandemic and as we emerge into a hundred percent hours. They've given this considerable thought and have really engaged our patrons and, and schools, and even thought about things like busing schedules and so on as they propose these new hours. And, and they're recommending, so it's really through, through me, their work is being presented to you. So I'm happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Thank you, Brian. Questions, comments for Brian? Very straightforward. Okay, entertain the motion to receive the recommendation. By Jagir, thank you. Seconded by Jones. Further discussion? All in favor? And that carries. Thank you. Thanks, Brian. Move on to Purchasing Coordinator, Procurement Activity Report from April first to June thirtieth. Good morning, Mike. Welcome.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to council. So this quarterly procurement activity report details the award of contracts that were approved by directors, and they're valued between fifteen thousand and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The report covers the period from April to June of this year, the list of the projects, the supplier, and the amounts as attached as appendix A. All contracts comply with the county's procurement policy. Recommendation is that the report be received and filed, and at this time, I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mike. Everyone's heard the report, recommendation, questions, comments? I'm seeing none. Entertain the motion to adopt, receive. Jones. Martin. I'll call the vote. All in favor, please. Carries. Thanks, Mike. Good job.
Thank you.
Move on to Director of Financial Services, two thousand and twenty-one second quarter performance. Good morning, Mike. Or good morning, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The report before you was presented to the Budget Committee at the end of July. It's the performance through the second quarter. For the second quarter, we had favorable performance of two hundred and twenty-five thousand. That brings the year-to-date to just over four hundred thousand. The predominant reason for the favorable performance is in our salary lines, as you can see listed in, or there are numerous departments where there was a short in staffing, and that resulted in two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in favorable performance in the second quarter. In POA, we had revenue which was below normal, and that did not result in really an impact at a county level. It was a minimal four thousand dollars. But there's detail behind that that makes it significant that we should point it out to council. There were cost savings of a hundred and seventy thousand, but revenue was down four hundred. What that means is then that there's fewer payments going to our local municipal partners. We reviewed that back in June with our, with the local treasures, and again, yesterday, we had a treasures meeting, we went through that once again. So they're fully aware of the situation and aware that by the end of the year that there still may not be payments flowing based on the delays of revenue from COVID. The recommendation before you is that the report be received.
Thank you, Jim. Questions for Jim? Comments? Counselor Ketchblatt.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Jim, thank you for the report regarding the POA. Is expected that there will be reduced payments into the new year.
You mean in two thousand and twenty-two?
Yes.
We're hoping that in two thousand and twenty-two, things bounce back to normal, but if you'd asked me six months ago where we'd be today, you know, things keep changing, right? So it's going to be difficult to predict. At some point in time, revenues are going to bounce back, and there should be a catch-up. So we should see some recovery, but when that happens, it's going to depend on how the coming months play out in terms of the pandemic.
Okay, thank you. Oh.
Counselor McPhail.
Through you, Mr. Warden, is this a situation where there is a decline in offenses that are being written, or is there a issue with payments getting received?
There was a decline in revenue at the start of the pandemic because activity was very slow, but predominantly what we're seeing is just the receipt of payments because we weren't having regular court hearings. We're now starting with video courts, so we're starting to see a recovery, but we're still not back to in-person court here, so that's causing some of the delay.
It's the process that is the culprit here.
I see Mr. Gibson wants to make a point. Go ahead, Steve.
I can confirm that the issue is, the process issue, part three trials are still not forward at this stage. Some of that is tied to the transfer, part three transfer process, which again was delayed above the, on that front as well. We're hopeful of having the transfer of part three matters completed. I can tell you that Elgin was, was one of the first municipalities to commence trials again, part one and part two trials. We started those in May, which was, well, some municipalities have not started trials at all. So I would expect that once trials begin again in earnest, although many of them will be revoked, but once they're commenced again, that there will be an increase in revenue. And once the part three transfer is completed, even on a interim basis, there'll be future savings in relation to non-payment of the Crown Attorney for doing the part for carrying and prosecuting the part three matters, which will be moving forward.
Thank you, Steve. Counselor Ketchblatt, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. This is a little outside the scope of the report, but Jim, given the current state of issues facing us, we are looking at perhaps some significant write-downs on particular tax file. How is the county, or what is the process that the county will use in order to accommodate, say, an allowance for a bad tax account?
We have a fairly decent budget set aside in normal years, and we'll have to look at if we need to bump that up for two thousand and.
I guess the question is, do we have an allowance line item in the budget currently that accommodates that?
Yes, we have, we have write-downs in the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions, comments? All right. entertain the motion to receive. Deputy Warden Mennel, seconded by Jagir, thank you. I'll call the vote. All in favor. That carries. Move on to Manager of Planning, Final Plan of Subdivision Approval, Talbotville Metals, Phase One. Lots of things going on in Southold. Who's, Brian, you presenting this? Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Warden, in Nancy's absence. This information report is to advise county council that final approval was given for Talbotville Metals, Phase One, Plan of Subdivision in, in Southold, and that plans were registered with Elgin Land Registry Office. Development, once finished, will consist of a hundred and sixty-one single residential lots and a series of supporting servicing and recreational blocks. Location map is, has been appendix to the report. Recommendation before you is that the report be received and filed. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Questions, comments? Certainly good news for Southold. Are you for the question? All in, do I have a mover and seconder, have I? Moved by Counselor Jones, seconded by McPha, by Bob Purcell. Needing another coffee.
Your head's confused.
Yeah. Please, it's confused me. All right, moved and seconded. I'll call the question, please. All in favor? And it's carried. Thank you. Item seven is General Manager of Engineering, Planning, and Enterprise, Deputy CAO, Elgin County, North Frontenac Telephone Corporation Limited, Telecommunication, Equipment Consent, and Road User Agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to council, happy to present this report, which seeks council's approval and authorization to, to execute the attached proposed telecommunications, equipment consent, and road user agreement between Elgin and North Frontenac Telephone Corporation Limited. The agreement is in support of ongoing fiber deployment in various settlement communities in Bham. The recommendation before you is that the report be received and filed, and that council approve and authorize the warden and chief administrative officer to execute proposed agreement. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Again, some good news. Sometimes we live in a very complex world, but these, these agreements are very necessary, and I certainly appreciate the work staff does in preparing them. Questions, comments? If not, I'll entertain the motion. Moved by Counselor Ketchblatt. Mine's going blank again. Seconded by McPhail. I'll call the vote. All in favor, please. Again, that carries. Thank you. County Solicitor, Amendment to Fire Training Officer Cost Sharing Agreement, Addition of Central Elgin Municipality as Contracting Local Municipality. Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to council. The report is self-explanatory. Central Elgin seeks to join the Fire Training Officer Cost Sharing Agreement. If that joined or is approved, the existing agreement requires housekeeping revisions to accommodate Central Elgin as a new signatory and a contracting local municipality. By terms of the original agreement, consent of all original signatories is required. As a result, notices of the request for joiner and, and proposed amendment agreement have been forward to all original signatories. No opposition has been received to date. So there, there is a copy of the original agreement and the proposed amendment agreement before you. Take any questions.
Thank you, Steve. Questions? Mr. Gibson. I think I can speak for Counselor Martin and myself, who are glad to be joining. No discussion, entertain the motion. Moved by Counselor Jones, seconded by Deputy Warden Mennel. I will call the vote. All in favor, please. And Carries. Thank you. Move on to Chief Administrative Officer, Crane Conservation Area. Buck.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Through you to members of council. This report details a request received from Jim Crane regarding a possible relocation of the monument from the former Crane Conservation Area located in Southold to county property, specifically in front of the Heritage Center or in the general proximity of the Heritage Center at four fifty sunset. So two options are presented for council's consideration. The first is that county council decline the request from Mr. Crane to relocate the monument, and that the warden be directed to provide written notification of council's decision to Mr. Crane. And the second option is that the Director of Community and Cultural Services be directed to provide additional information for council's consideration at a future meeting, including but not limited to confirmation of ownership, acquisitions, process, risk, financial implications associated with this donation. With that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions council might have.
Thank you, Julie. Counselor Martin, go ahead.
Just a comment I would like to make. I mean, I know that Mr. Crane tried to relocate it to the cemetery where Dr. Crane is buried, but I know sitting, you know, as the secretary treasurer of the cemetery board, I know that that's not allowed, you can't have anything over a certain height and all that, so that I know that's not an area that he could go. And I thought, to me, I know in Central Elgin, we relocated a cairn that was going over the hill into the lake for a fellow that had been very instrumental in the scouting movement, and had provided his farm as where they're camped, et cetera. And we moved that up to the start of community hall and put a plaque then explaining why it was there instead of where it had originally happened. I would think this would be a good thing for the heritage of our community if we had an area somewhere maybe to the south of the, not the right side where we might expand the building, but somewhere to the south there that, if there is a cairn, I've been very concerned about the Talbot Cairn, which had the brass plaque stolen. Nothing has been done. It hasn't been changed or repaired. We also put a War of eighteen twelve special thing there about the, the burning and, and the invasion, et cetera, of that area. That was done through Mike Baker, and when we did all the War of eighteen twelve plaques throughout the county, and that one was stolen as well. So I, I think we're losing some of our history because of it, and I would be very happy to go for the second option where we can ask the Director of Cultural Services to look into all the aspects. I know Mr. Crane is offering to pay for the whole thing to be put here, and that he would pay for the plaque, but we can see, anyway, I would certainly support the second rather than, I don't think we should turn him down.
Thank you for that. Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And I guess the other side of the story is where the plaque is now, the current, the individuals that own the farm now or the property have indicated that they're part of the family. I don't know that for a fact, but they indicate that they are descendants of the Cranes, and they said that they promised that they would maintain it. So that leaves a little bit of dilemma. Well, there's an assumption that they aren't going to, they said they will on their word. So a little bit of dilemma for me. I'm not sure why we're moving something when people have already promised to maintain it where it is.
I guess I can, I had a phone call from Mr. Crane yesterday, day before, can't remember, but recently. So he's aware that we're having this discussion today. Two things he wanted me to relay to council, that he'll cover all costs. He emphatically stated, all costs. If the, the ownership of the cairn is in question, he's prepared to replicate it with a brand-new one and cover all those costs. So like Counselor Martin has said, you know, there would, may be some obstacles, but he's willing to cover the costs of those. So I'm just putting that out as information relayed to me. Go ahead.
Just, I don't know. It says that the brass plaque has been replaced with a plastic one, and I was just curious as to why or what happened to the brass plaque, or if we know anything about that.
It was just to ensure it didn't get stolen and taken to a scrapyard. I believe the individuals have it in their house. I believe the individuals have it in their house at this point. It's my last understanding of that. I don't think it's moved.
A follow up. If it's been there for quite a few years as the brass plaque had never stolen and there was no one living there, I, I'm curious as to why they would remove it because.
Because there's been such a fuss made. It's that anybody that reads the paper will all, all of a sudden, no, there's a hundred pounds of brass in there taking. It's in a very secluded area, not too much traffic around there, so.
Mr. Crane did indicate to me that if he had to, if the ownership or whoever has it, if it can't be found, whatever, he would provide a new one. So that, and pay for it, that he wanted me to relate, relay that to council. So man is determined. Julie.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to members of council. That's new information to me, both the, the fact that the current owner would consider, have considered retaining that at the property. So if we have to be careful at the county to make sure that we don't have two of these that exist. It's going to take staff some effort connecting with lower temps and connecting with the current owners, connecting with Mr. Crane. So as long as council feels this is worth the time and effort, because there is obvious investment on behalf of the county in order to make something like this happen, then we're happy to support it.
Go ahead.
Just one other comment I would make, Mr. Warden, through you, is that the property no longer reflects what Dr. Crane gave. It's not the forested area any longer. A lot of the trees have been removed and the house is being built there. So that's, I don't know, certainly I think it's worth the effort to check it out.
Counselor McPhail.
If we did entertain bringing the plaque, I think that right, Julie, there's a lot of groundwork has to be done in this file before we can determine a, determine. Whose cairn is it? And if it ultimately is a situation where it is and ends up being moved to county property, could we not go along with that in the spirit of Dr. Crane's wishes? Plant some trees in recognition of his contribution to Elgin County and the history of, of our county. Certainly, I think history is owned by everyone. And when it comes to preserving it, I think that we all have a duty to try to do that.
Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor McPhail. We can certainly include any costs associated with adding trees to, to that area within the follow up report. If so, directed by council.
Counselor French.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm in agreement that we should be looking at option two because number one, we have to get confirmation of ownership. We don't own it. It's not ours. And who are we to say that it can be moved if we don't know the information? So we have to do our homework before we move on with this. And we shouldn't be putting any money into it till we absolutely know all the details. So that's my take on it, option two.
Counselor Jagair, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I, I would agree that there are a lot of assumptions on several parties. So I think it would be nice to have more information to make a decision. And as part of that decision, even considering alternate options, that it may not be moving a monument, it may be creating a new one here on our own property to recognize the history, to recognize the heritage and donations. So there might be yet another alternative to explore. Yeah, so that would be my recommendation in support of option two.
Counselor Purcell.
If, if we're going to ask staff to reinvestigate or investigate further on this, there probably is an option that might be acceptable. The brass plaque was taken off because there was a real rash of flash, those plaques being taken in our area down there. And they had sat there for hundreds of years or for almost a hundred years, some of them with outdated problems. We have the ministry trying to replace some, but they're almost, they're afraid to put brass plaques out again as their targets. So we would be moving that kind of a problem here if we moved the whole cairn and put it outside and all that. So there are other options to look at. One of the considerations is, I, I think if approached properly, the current owners might donate the original brass plaque, continue their promise to keep the cairn and the, and the story there on the property because they have promised to do that. The other part of that is we do have a lot of these types of things around. So maybe you end up with a wall inside of a building or something where these plaques are on display, very much like cemeteries when you, you can't save everything. You, you end up with a wall to save the important parts of it. This might be the beginning of something like that in the archives where, because if we put it out in the open, we have the same problems of security that exist everywhere across the county. So I, I think if we, we set it back, I, I don't want staff to have to spend a lot of time on this. But I think it is an opportunity to look at a way to properly preserve some of this stuff without the bulk of the other parts. As you said, when you moved the one that was falling into the lake, you basically had to create something else to explain why it was there. So we're in the same sort of situation if we brass one, which is being, I understand being properly guarded by a family in their home, whether they've hidden it under the bed or something, at least it's not being stolen. So if, if we turn it back for more, that might be another way of looking at it, to find a solution that works for everybody.
Counselor.
Certainly with these stone cairens and having an experience of having one in Westalk. The rebuilding of a stone cairn is a very difficult thing to do. Number one, finding a stonemason that's willing to do it, number one. Number two, it's very, very, very expensive. And I think Bob is hitting on the, the right thing. If we do have a brass plaque, we do have a building right there. We do have walls outside and inside. Is that the best place to present those and just say yes, we're willing to, to mount the, the plaque on the wall? Somewhat reluctant to enter into the stone cairn to put it on.
Sounds like we're not in favor of, of option one. So if we move on to option two and refer, defer it back to staff, we, we all agree, we do not want to burden staff with much more. This won't be the highest priority of council, we realize that. But I think that's what I'm hearing. And I think we've had some good discussion, good suggestions. And, you know, I think Mr. Crane probably is going to be pleased with this. He's sort of still in the game and he has indicated his money is, will be there. So I think, or what I'm hearing, that we're suggesting with option two, Duncan?
I'll move option two.
Okay. Do we have second, Counselor Martin? And again, that'll go back to staff. I'm sure Mr. Crane will be in touch and, you know, again, I don't want to burden staff with all kinds of work, but I think that's the direction. And I think Mr. Crane realizes this, this will be looked after, but it's not the top of priorities. But it's, you know, we realize that it's something we want to do. Are we finished with our discussion? If we're moving secondary, are we ready to vote? All in favor, please? And that's carried unanimously, thank you. Okay, moving on to vaccine, vaccination administration policy. It's a lock on from Julie. It's
Be out of the way here. This is the next one, COVID emergency team planning, August of June.
On my sheet, it's 12, but we can, we can do the COVID emergency ten of plan.
Thanks, Mr. Warden, through you to members of council. This report reviews our operational plans that support our response to COVID-19 in the workplace and in support of the health and safety of our staff and the community in general. I'm reminiscent of a couple of months ago when I was quite optimistic that you wouldn't see any more of these come the fall. But notwithstanding that, here is our August report. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Julie? Not seen any? Pleased with the report?
I'll move.
Moved by Counselor Jones, second by Counselor Jagair. No further discussion, I'll call the vote, all in favor, please? And again, that carries, thank you. Julie, you're still up?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Warden, through you to members of council. Since COVID-19 first emerged as a threat early last year, we have made every effort to reduce the spread of this virus and to protect staff and the community by following all possible health precautions. I'm presenting a draft COVID-19 vaccine verification policy for your review. This is one additional measure that can be put in place to protect our workplace facilities and the communities. The policy was developed after reviewing what other municipalities and organizations are putting in place, as well through discussions with our local health, health officials, union leaders and local administrators. So the presentation today, which is shared on the screen, I realize this was a walk-on report, so I will take some time to carefully go through some of the provisions that we've included within the policy. But the first part will cover a review of the draft COVID-19 vaccine verification policy and recommendations. And the second part will touch upon long-term care home policy considerations. So we often start with recommendations so that you have an idea of where we are recommending that we end up. For the first part, with respect to the vaccine verification policy, our recommendation is that Elgin County Council hereby approve policy 8.390, which is the COVID-19 vaccine verification policy. And the second part, when we consider long-term care home policy, that staff be directed to prepare a draft long-term care homes mandatory vaccine policy for consideration by county council at its meeting on September the 28th, 2021. To provide you with some background and context, we did administer an anonymous survey of our administrative staff. And that staff, they're non-home staff, so it includes libraries, museums, archives, county admin building staff and provincial offenses administration. So there's 99 staff who we consider to be non-home staff. And we received results from 79 respondents. And of the 79 who responded, 10 indicated that they don't have the vaccine. So this number was higher than I had suspected. As well, our local administrator's C A Os group has been closely tracking vaccine policies that have been adopted or in progress in some of our municipal cohorts in, in our area. And we've discussed what, what the county might consider and ways in which the county could potentially take the lead for interested municipalities. So we have endeavored to create a policy that reflects some local needs as well, though the, the flexibility would, would remain for those who have local nuances that they need to, context that needs to be considered. The county does have an obligation under provincial legislation to take all necessary precautions reasonable in the circumstances to protect the health and safety of staff and members of the public from hazards of COVID-19. A key element to ensuring this protection is in place is putting, is, is adopting a program that requires that all employees, members of council, members of council-appointed committees who are required to attend, to attend county buildings or facilities, staff of contractors or consultants who are acting on behalf of the corporation, who are required to attend our corporate facilities, as well as volunteers, interns and students on placement, making sure that they're fully immunized against COVID-19 or regularly tested for COVID-19. Draft policy 8.390 is in line with public health guidance and supports direction that vaccines provide a high level of protection against COVID-19 and related variants. The Southwestern Public Health Medical Officer of Health has confirmed that she intends to issue materials and letters to all workplaces recommending that workplaces have a vaccine policy in place. And we anticipate receiving these materials on Friday. Management team has carefully reviewed and considered vaccination policies adopted by many other municipalities. And I can say that some municipalities have taken a rather aggressive approach to vaccine verification or mandating vaccines within the workplace. I will also note that these municipalities have much larger staffing complements than we do in Elgin. So our approach takes into consideration that entire business units could be depleted if we say took an aggressive approach, which is why we have taken the approach, which I will get to in a couple of slides. Another key consideration and provide you with some further context here. The province of Ontario announced that beginning September 22nd, 2021, proof of COVID-19 vaccination will be required to access certain public settings and facilities. We anticipate that this may help with vaccination uptake when staff aren't just required to have a vaccine for work, but, but to do other things, go to restaurants, go to movie theaters, potentially go to arenas, et cetera. So the draft policy presented to council aims to achieve full vaccination among those to whom the policy applies in alignment with provincial directives and subject to limited exceptions in accordance with the Human Rights Code. Vaccination in accordance, or sorry, in combination with health and safety precautions have been identified by public health as the single most effective means of reducing the transmission of COVID-19 in workplaces and in our community. It's also important to note that the county will continue to maintain all current health and safety precautions in the workplace and make revisions as necessary, as we have done since the onset of the pandemic. Also included within the draft policy is a provision that ensures that the county reserves the right to amend the policy as the county determines to be appropriate and required. So within the draft policy, the, the policy would apply to county of Elgin employees. This includes full-time, part-time, permanent, temporary and casual staff. Would also apply to members of Elgin County Council and members of council-appointed committees who are required to enter our, enter our county facilities or buildings, as well as staff of contractors or consultants acting on behalf of the corporation who are required to enter our buildings or facilities, volunteers, interns and students on place, on placements. As well, there is provision that covers all new and rehired county employees, including seasonal and student employees. And they would be required to be fully vaccinated, including boosters, as a condition of hire, which is in alignment with the policy that you passed for the homes in June for new hires for our long-term care homes. The policy is restricted to non-home staff. It does not apply to long-term care home staff or volunteers or placements at any of our three long-term care homes. With respect to the options, we are proposing in this draft policy that for anyone who would apply under provision or section 4.0 under the applicability, they could select one of five options. The first option is vaccination with proof of vaccination. So the individual would still be subject to screening that our, our current screening process. The second option is not vaccinated, but in progress to complete vaccination. So under this option, they would be required to conduct, complete mandatory rapid antigen testing three times per week, 48 hours between tests. And that would be required until proof of vaccination is provided. And under these circumstances, if an individual had their second test scheduled, then we are proposing that the county would provide the test. The third option would be not vaccinated due to a medical accommodation. And under this option, the procedure would be that the staff or individual undertake mandatory rapid antigen testing three times a week, 48 hours between tests, and that the county would provide the test. Fourth option is not vaccinated. So mandatory rapid antigen testing would be undertaken three times a week by the employee or individual. And that would be required until proof of vaccination is provided. And the individual must complete an educational program. And both the test and the educational program. And both the test and the educational program we're proposing be completed outside of working hours at the expense of the employee. The fifth option is to decline to disclose vaccination status, which is, which we would assume would be not vaccinated. Or for privacy reasons, an employee or individual may wish to not share that information with us. Under this option, the individual or employee would be required to undertake mandatory rapid antigen testing three times a week, 48 hours between tests, until proof of vaccination is provided, and the individual must complete an education program. And the test and education component would be completed outside of work hours at the expense of the employee. So a draft policy was circulated by email to councillors this morning, a final draft. There were many iterations that you received over the last few days, but section eight fully defines the procedure for each of these five options. So the education program, we propose adopting the one that has been in place at our long-term care homes since the spring. And so we would adjust that and adapt it for use by non-homes employees. Essentially, the education program includes learning components such as how does the COVID vaccine work, vaccine safety related to the development of COVID-19 vaccines, benefits of the vaccine against COVID, risks of not being vaccinated against COVID, and possible side effects of COVID-19 vaccination. Some additional details included within the policy that are worth highlighting for council. The policy itself is indefinite in nature to address the risks and impacts of the pandemic, noting the duration of the pandemic is unknown. The policy will be reviewed on a regular basis and amended as required as new information, data, and public health guidelines regarding the COVID-19 pandemic evolve. Legislative framework and some of our reference documents are included in section three. The policy indicates that the county reserves the right to require rapid antigen testing of any employee or individual at any time and on a reasonable basis. The safety plan that we have in all of our work areas and to support each of our corporate facilities would be updated to include this policy. And management team has developed an administrative procedure to support policy implementation. Employee and public screening will continue at all of our locations. And collection of information and privacy considerations are referenced in section 12. So when it comes to the consequences of non-compliance with policy, it is important to note that employees who fail to comply with the policy that subject to progressive discipline up to and including termination. And this is in keeping with our current HR procedures and policies. So this sums up an overview of the policy. I know it's a lot to take in and a lot to consider for county council. But at this time, we are recommending that Elgin County Council hereby approve policy 8.390, which is the COVID-19 vaccine vaccination verification policy. And perhaps this is an appropriate time to pause and take any questions regarding part one before we move on to part two, which is long-term care home considerations.
Thank you, Julie. Councillor Martin, go ahead.
Yes, through you, Mr. Warden. I would highly commend you on this, and this is something I have been wanting to do. And I know as a lower-tier municipality, we're waiting for the county because we want to implement same policy. And I agree with this totally, and that, you know, we're paying for the things for those who have proper reasons and that they have, because it's $40 a test for the rapid antigen testing. And I know the hospital are still paying for everyone, and I have recommended that they shouldn't pay for those who are refusing to be vaccinated. So I think this is an excellent policy, and I fully support.
Thank you for that, for the comments. Deputy Warden, medal.
I also would support this policy. I just recently had a holiday in Quebec, and they're probably two months ahead of us. And no matter where you go, they're asking for proof of vaccination. And in fact, we were in a restaurant where the guy had one shot, he didn't have a second shot, but they wouldn't let him in. And so it really is, they found that, it was not only restaurants, it's museums and sporting events, and anybody who wants to play baseball has to show proof of vaccination. So they have found that they're encouraging those who are not vaccinated to get vaccinated, just because it's very awkward and encourages it. So I would support this policy that Julie's presented.
Councillor.
Just one other comment, you can't visit the hospital either. You know, it's a thing you can be obviously admitted to hospital, but you cannot visit if you're not double vaccinated. And within, it has to be at least two weeks since your second vaccine. One thing I would ask is, say, county council, if we show proof of the double vaccination, will there be a chart kept that you don't have to do that every time you come in the door? This would be helpful, because it takes a bit of time to screen as it is.
Councillor Ketchum.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Like my colleagues, I do encourage everyone to get vaccinated. Obviously, for me, it was a personal choice of trying to protect myself. And I would encourage everyone else to take advantage of it. I do have a couple of concerns, and perhaps some clarification can be given here. And what jurisdiction does the county have on contractors and employees that way? Would that not be up to the individual company who's providing that service to us to be ensuring that their employees are vaccinated? It's to their advantage to have them vaccinated, but let's admit it, there are going to be some on that crew that absolutely will refuse as well. So if we, if we are, first of all, do we have jurisdiction over that? And secondly, are we limiting the pool of available contractors to perform services that we require in our buildings and facilities? And I assume roads are not part of this. But you know what I'm getting at, are we limiting the pool of available labor to adopting and including them in this policy?
So I can get that started, and then I'll pass things over to Mr. Gibson. We have, let's use cleaners as an example. So there would be a provision within our current contract with the cleaners that they do comply with certain policies and procedures, one of which would be any sort of health and safety policy. So Steve, do you want to further elaborate on that provision?
Yeah. You guys are going to lie within the, well, in a couple places. Firstly, depending upon any provincial regulation or statutory provision that would create a source for jurisdiction. Secondly, it's the contract themselves. And it's going to depend upon what those contracts say. With a lot of, many of our RFTs, there is the implied, there is the provision in the tender document, proposal documents themselves, which would create a requirement for compliance with bylaws, policies, et cetera, of the municipalities. The other more practical provision would be in relation to termination options in respect of those contracts, that if there is allowance for termination for nature simply on notice, that that would also be a provision that could be applied upon. Firstly, in most of the contracts that we have developed, there will be compliance provisions that gives us jurisdiction.
Councillor McPhail.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. By the report there, am I correct in the fact that about one-third of our staff are not vaccinated? About 10 out of the 69?
So of those who responded, I think it's around 13%. Is that?
Well, there's 99, there's 99. And then there was 10 respondents that aren't vaccinated. So I forget what the number, 60-some-odd percent said they were. 79, so it goes down to 69 if you take those 10 off out of the 99. So that roughly is about a third of the population, or of our employees. So that would put them into the category of requiring to arrange and pay for their own testing on their own time. Okay. So that being said, I did a little bit of research, and has there been any thought to where these people are going to get their testing? Because most of the testing spots are not open after 4:30 in the afternoon. So is it a situation that we are setting one-third of our employees to failure because they won't be able to get the testings? And is that a situation that is going to put the overall operation of the corporation in jeopardy if those one-third of our workforce here are unable to meet the requirements and are not allowed in the building?
Go ahead.
Three, Mr. Warden, to councillor McPhail. I think it's perhaps incorrect or misleading to assume that it's one-third. Because we are, we have survey responses from 79 employees. And it's likely that the other staff members were on vacation and didn't receive the survey. So at this point, the stat that we have to rely on is that 13% of our administrative staff are unvaccinated. We do have policies and can afford staff the flexibility to attend medical appointments during work hours. So we'd be perfectly willing to work with staff members who needed to, you know, work, you know, save up half an hour through their lunch break or come in half an hour early in order to attend an appointment in the afternoon. Alternatively, one other consideration that our team is working through, the logistical details of, is whether or not we're able to offer onsite testing for those staff who could book a time, who could pop downstairs. The challenge, of course, is when we have 10 library locations to consider as well. So tests are offered at some community locations through physicians. Michelle, do you know of any other locations?
So there are some pharmacies, but I'm not sure locally currently there was one doing. I'm not sure whether they still are, and I can research that for you for sure.
Yeah, and we're also exploring whether there are test kits available through the Chamber of Commerce. And so if we're, if we are, we're not going to, it's not our, it's not our intention to make this really punitive. You know, we want to support staff as they maybe use this time to get more education or to increase their level of comfort or have conversations with their physicians. So if we're able to get free test kits, and it isn't an administrative burden, at least for the short term while free test kits are available, we'll certainly work with staff across the organization to do so. And if they need to adjust their work hours in order to attend an appointment, we'd be pleased to work with them to make that happen.
Duncan.
That's not currently reflected in this policy.
Be part of the administrative procedure.
I think people are just going to read the policy, kick into the administrative side until after the fact. I'm just worried about, as long as we don't impact the operation of the corporation. When you get into the outlying areas, the opportunity to get rapid tested decreases dramatically because we don't have the number of facilities that they do have in the center here. Certainly, library personnel and Westmore and Rodney, it could be a much more difficult situation. And I don't know whether that will be required or not. It's just that I'm just concerned that when we go into this and we put a policy in place that we don't deliver to catch people in a trap that we're not trying to catch.
I think I've got councillor French first, and then councillor Jaguer.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a question, just I may have missed it. Did you mention that the health unit is going to give some guidelines? I believe it's the 17th, was that the date that you mentioned?
Through you, Mr. Warden, councillor French, yes. So Middlesex London Health Unit Medical Officer of Health issued a statement to all local workplaces recommending that workplaces adopt a vaccination policy or a vaccine administration policy. So we anticipate that a similar statement coming out of our Southwestern Public Health, vis a vis the Medical Officer of Health on Friday.
Okay, thank you. Can I ask one more question, make another comment? So because we got this information today, basically, and so our public hasn't even had a chance to look at it, let alone our staff, we can talk about it today, but I don't think we should be voting. It's too big of a deal today. Like, it's just too much information to maul over, and that's my opinion. I think we need to hear from the health unit, and we'll hear, they may say the exact same thing, but I'd like to hear it from them. And I think that we all need time to really look at this, and including our staff, they needed to have an opportunity to look at this as well. So I'm fine with talking about it, that's great, and I'm glad you presented it, and we've got a lot to look at. But I really truly think we need to take time to think about it before we vote on it.
Councillor Jaguer.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So being that this would be a change in terms of employment, partway through, if employees want to appeal or if they reject the policy, so what's the, what's the process and where does that leave them during the appeal process?
I'm looking back at our HR team, Amy, any comments? I see Nick standing up. Either of you want to take first stab at that?
I can provide an answer, it should probably be provided in closed session.
Okay.
All right.
And as a follow-up, is there a provision, or I guess I'm thinking, where does the remote work policy sort of dovetail somehow into this? Or not at all? Or is this for closed session also?
Three, Mr. Warden, to councillor Jaguer. I can answer the second part of that, which is how does this apply to remote workers? So we don't have any employees who are working 100% remote. So it would apply to any employee who has to enter county facilities and/or buildings.
If I may, just to clarify, could it also, could the remote work policy become an avenue for someone who does not want to be vaccinated? So then they would apply to their manager to request to work remotely 100%?
Three, Mr. Warden, to councillor Jaguer. I can't think of a single position in the corporation that can work 100% outside of county buildings or facilities. So the short answer is no.
I agree with that. I think councillor Martin.
Yeah, I just, the reason I would like to see is, if possible, and I know we have a closed session comments, to adopt this, is our municipality, I know, is waiting for the county to do this. We would like to do this at our next meeting, and that's before your next meeting. So I very much appreciate this getting looked after before then, if possible.
I did hear earlier mention of the Chamber of Commerce. I attended with Jeff Hurick and Mayor Preston. Grant, you were there as well. And they're making available these rapid tests, so that may be an avenue. Go ahead.
My, sorry, my understanding was to all workplaces, it was free. Whether, I'm not sure, obviously, the chambers doesn't have deep pockets, so I'm not sure how long that supply would last, but it's something to look into.
I, yes, and they were, they were doing it to aid business and small business, et cetera. So I would check that out. I certainly agree with councillor Martin, this, I agree, it's a lot to undertake here in defense of Julie. This is complex, and I tell you, our workload has been complex. I appreciate Julie probably worked half a night on this, maybe nights.
Or all weekend, but.
Oh, if we didn't have such an outstanding employee, we may be waiting quite a while to get it, so.
This was a team effort.
Yes, and I appreciate, like, I'm looking at some of our staff here. The hours they're putting in, it's appreciated, at least from where I sit. Councillor McPhail.
Yes, through you, Mr. Warden, to Julie. I guess as this thing moves forward, is it your thought that this, at some point in time, is going to be a Ministry of Health directive that you must have a vaccination policy? Or is it going to? Or is it going to be a Southwest Public Health, and as you mentioned, it's going to be a recommendation, it's not a mandatory order from the Office of Medical Officer of Health? Or is this an initiative of Eldon County?
Go ahead.
There's a bit to unpack there, but I will give it a go. Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor McHale. I'm hesitant to speculate whether the Ministry of Health will make this mandatory. I will comment that throughout the pandemic, we have followed closely the guidance of Southwestern Public Health. We anticipate and have confirmation from the Medical Officer of Health that she will be recommending to all workplaces in Eldon, Oxford, St. Thomas, that they adopt a workplace vaccine, vaccination policy. So anticipating that guidance coming out on Friday does seem a bit immature, premature. However, as Counselor Martin mentioned, we are presenting this as a walk-on report, having spent lots of time trying to get it right over the weekend so that we can support our local municipal partners who are also looking for some leadership here from the county with respect to this policy. But I also think our community is looking to the county to take a leadership approach to vaccination verification policies and policy development. So those were really the motivations, and forgive me, I forget the third piece of your...
I think it's just, it's just what, I do believe that we need a policy. Right there, I'm double vaxxed, my wife's double vaxxed, and I think everybody is. Counselor Ketchum says that you should seriously consider getting a vaccination, but as the Warden said, this is a very, very sensitive issue. And I think that if we do it, we have to put a lot of thought into it because, in all honesty, we are treading where the province and the health unit is scared to tread because they won't come out and say, you shall do this, and this is how you shall do it. So we're moving forward this. We won't be able to say, well, the province told us we have to do it. We will own it if we will do it. So if we're going to do it, let's make sure that we really do it right.
Counselor Jones?
Yeah, I think he's, I don't think the health team has the right to mandate anything. It's certainly the province that has that legal right. As employer can do what we feel is right for employees and the business to keep the corporation moving ahead. I feel there's some fear minority. Employees have the rights, they have a right to take badge tests every forty-eight hours of that they so choose. You may lose a few, but fact is, wherever they want to get rehired is going to require at that point, ninety percent of the time. So if they leave here, wherever they are going to go is going to say, you must be vaccinated to be hired. That's a fact. So are you going to leave? There's probably there will be some that will leave. That's a risk we have to take. When it comes to companies that we hire to do the job, they're in the same boat where, I know we had this discussion at the last meeting about open transparency and everybody knowing how much we expect the cost of the contract is going to be before we even issue the RFP. Most companies see municipalities and government as a cash cow. And if they know they have to have their employees vaccinated if they want to come and do a job for us, it will happen because it's money in their pocket. That's a fact. That's the way I would look at it for my own business. If I needed to get that contract, I'll make sure the employees that I'm sending there are vaccinated.
Sorry, Counselor Martin?
Just one further comment, and that is the City of London adopted a policy just like this several weeks ago.
Three, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Martin. City of London's approach is quite aggressive, which is you either receive your vaccination or you go off on unpaid leave of absence.
Just one other comment, the hospital does require the rapid antigen testing every day, not every forty-eight hours.
Deputy Warden?
Just a comment in regard to testing. It's not necessary to go to a testing spot to be tested. My nephew just returned from Korea, was isolating in our place and had to be tested, not leaving the farm, and so there was a kit that they gave him, and they literally did a self-test. So it's not an issue to go somewhere.
That, I am assuming that's the same thing as the Chamber of Commerce have, and they're promoting for small business, so that's...
Well, Julie and them have brought forward something that is probably the most flexible from a point of being fair to our staff. But one of the things I think we all lose track of is we are worried about the minority, and it's the law of large numbers. We all know how many people across this country have been double vaccinated. It's more than half. We now know how many have got one vaccination, it's pushing to seventy-five percent. We have staff that we're forcing to go to work with people that might expose them to something they don't want to be exposed to. If we had somebody with a really communicable disease on county council and allowed them to walk into this room and expose all of you to tuberculosis or any of the other diseases that your science tells you you've got a problem with, we wouldn't let that happen. So we need to put something like this in place. All of our concerns, all the questions that we've asked relate to implementation, execution, communication, and then compliance. And it doesn't matter what policy you put in place, you're always going to have those problems. You have to be very careful how you do it. Well, if we trust our staff, be sensible about how they communicate, sensible about how they do the compliance, that's the biggest one, then we can make these things work. And it's clear throughout this document that it's a living document, which I hate those kind of terms, but it is. It could change Friday when you get some little tidbit of information from the health unit. It could change Monday when some of the senior levels of government start doing what they're supposed to do. Unfortunately, they've let it become a political issue. They've divided our country into groups that never should have happened. If they can tell me I cannot smoke next to you because my second-hand smoke is bad, they certainly should be able to tell me that I need a vaccination so I won't give you COVID-19. So I think we need to step up, approve this, trust our staff. They will listen to all the concerns we have here. We're not rolling everything out tomorrow, but you're at least sending the message to everybody. That message alone will grab a group of that thirteen to thirty percent, whatever number you want to take. Thirty percent is probably, they're not vaccinated, or we don't know. Fifteen percent is probably not vaccinated, but somewhere in that group, you're going to have an impact on that just when you send the message. So I agree with all the reluctance, I agree with the concerns, but let's think about the majority of our staff, who are conscious enough to worry about others, not just themselves, got their shots, and do we want to force them to be in an environment where it might be unsafe for them?
Counselor Ketchum?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Predicate my comments, I'm not an immunologist, so I'm not an expert, but my understanding in the very general sense is that the vaccination provides us the better opportunity to withstand any, you know, the symptoms from a COVID-19. That doesn't say that you can't catch it, you can't transmit it. But what this policy is suggesting, and please don't take offense to this, but I'm just going to put it out there, it tends to me to suggest the perpetual suggestion that those who are unvaccinated are typhoid marries. And I'm not so sure that that's true, because we, even though we're vaccinated, could carry this in to the unvaccinated. So all I'm suggesting is that they are the ones who are at greater risk. That's why I'm saying I encourage you, get vaccinated, because if this mitigates any or any chance that you'll get seriously sick from this disease, you should take that opportunity. We, right at the moment, the policy here is trying to encourage people to do that, because if you don't, this policy is suggesting you got, you got, you know, you got to go have your rapid antigen testing, and it'll be at your cost. Well, we all know that if you want to encourage someone to do something, hit them in the pocketbook, and that's what this is suggesting to do. And it is flexible, and I appreciate it. But, you know, I just caution again, to me, and again, I may have it all wrong, but it seems to me that we are perpetuating a policy or suggestion out there that it is somewhat divisive. But I agree with what Bob's saying, the majority out there believe in this, and it should be done, but I don't want to see divisions in our staff because of it. Okay? So I'm on the cusp of saying, yeah, let's support this and move ahead.
Julie?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Ketchum. I think you raised some very valid points. I would be interested in hearing what tweaks could be made in order to, you know, we contemplated probably fifty different versions, and this is the one that we landed on, but if you, if any members of council have any suggestions for ways that this could be improved from your perspective, that is valuable input for our team and I think for the local administrators who are probably watching this meeting as well. So if you have suggestions for what those options look like or what the testing process might entail, I encourage you to share those.
If I can add, I do like the suggestion of what you put forward is to try to keep the staff in the office, if you're going to provide that testing in this building or something, that's an option. And those who meet sections eight-four, eight-five, or is it eight-five, eight-six, whatever, eight-four, eight-five, if it's at their cost, fine, that's the way to do it. At the local level, I'll tell you that our concern right now is how do we deal with all of our volunteers? I'm not worried about a committee process at the local level because our committees aren't meeting. They've been suspended throughout the whole COVID ordeal, but it's our volunteer firefighters. I cannot guarantee you that a hundred percent of my, of our platoon down there are vaccinated. So that's a concern that we are going to have to deal with at the local level. We don't know how to enforce that. And we don't, you know, firefighters aren't ones that you just pick off the street. So how will we fill those ranks if all of a sudden our volunteers walk out the door?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Ketchum. I know that's a concern that I've heard not only from some of our constituent municipalities, but those outside of our community as well. So in an attempt to help kind of the collective decision-making process, we have invited Senior Legal Counsel Nick Loeb to attend our local administrators' meeting tomorrow morning at eight-thirty. He's done some research into what policy options exist locally to support those policy concerns or to address those policy concerns. Specific to volunteers and firefighters. That'll come back through your administrator.
Let's say one thing, last Thursday, I had the opportunity to golf with my almost son-in-law. Saturday became my son-in-law, finally. His phone's, and he's a top executive in a large roofing company, and his phone started during most of the day, and they, Board of Education, doing a couple of big jobs in different high schools, and the word come down, find out if your workers are vaccinated or they're not allowed onsite. And that, and you start getting calls from other colleagues in the industries, and yeah, it was major. And so we're not breaking ground here. This is going on across, so it's, if we do this, it's going to be a lot more acceptable than maybe three months ago, because it's, you know, institutions and big companies are ordering this, so. You know, if we postpone this decision today, what will be different two weeks from now? Other than we've delayed it, and Counselor French, I get it. We have not had an awful lot of time around here to read this, but I look at the people back there, and I know how many drafts there's been and how much work's gone in, so I applaud them, and I'm certainly prepared to make a decision. And I have a lot of respect and gratitude for the work they've done, but I'll shut up. Deputy Mayor, Deputy Warden, then I'll go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I think we need to take a stand. As Bob said, it's never going to be perfect, it's a living document, and we can always alternate as we go down the road. But I do think we need to make a stand and encourage our employees to get vaccinated, and certainly this was going to push them in that direction. So I'm prepared to adopt this today. In fact, I'm prepared to move that we adopt the recommendation from staff.
Counselor French, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So just to make it clear, I'm not against this whatsoever. I'm just trying to make sure that we do it properly and that we have the time to look at every option and make sure that our staff, and not our dedicated staff that are here that have worked endlessly on this policy, I'm talking about our other staff. And maybe if they have an opportunity to look at these suggestions, it may change their mind. You know, they may have a different outlook, we may see a difference. The thing is also, Julie just mentioned she'd like to have feedback from council. How do we give that feedback if we don't have time to give her the feedback? Because we've just got the report, so we've just looked at it now. So if council do have some other ideas that they'd like to share with Julie, when will we get that opportunity? That's all I'm saying. And I am vaccinated, so it's not that I'm against vaccines, it's just I want to do this properly.
And I certainly appreciate those comments. Yes, go ahead.
Three, Mr. Warden, to members of council, I will just point out that under the application or the procedure, we are requesting that individuals disclose their vaccination status by September twenty-second. They do have until October twenty-second to, before we begin the testing process. So there is, there is that lead time where we could communicate the policy, receive feedback, make any sort of amendments or tweaks back at the council horseshoe in accordance with what we're hearing or what we're experiencing. So maybe, you know, we can't accommodate testing and we have to come up with unique, who knows, or unique means of providing the testing, or the costs of the tests are outrageous, or, you know, we're losing staff, or staff are coming to us with concerns. That is information that with any policy that we roll out, we carefully consider anything that comes back from our staff. So I think we have some lead time here. If council was to approve this, we could make tweaks and adjustments or come back to you and tell you how the implementation process has gone out, rolled out. That's an option as well. So testing and education doesn't start until October twenty-second.
Counselor Warden, go ahead.
I would just second Counselor Warden.
Thank you for that. Obviously, we've had a good discussion, taken this very serious. Counselor McHale, go ahead.
Well, just to be perfectly clear, in my mind, we're going to approve this. The health unit is going to comment later on this week regarding the issue today, and then we're going to go to staff for comments, and those comments are going to come back to us.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Mr. Warden, through you to members of council, sorry if I did confuse you, that was not my intention. So to be clear, the information that we anticipate receiving from the Medical Officer of Health on Friday, simply that, we will be recommending that workplaces in Eldon County adopt a workplace policy. We are not going to submit this policy for the health unit's review because it is drafted in accordance with public health guidelines. We will, as we do with any policy, ensure that when we roll it out to staff, it is appropriate and well-received and...
is appropriate and well-received and supported by staff. So we'll make any, every effort to have one-on-one conversations with our staff and make sure that they understand this and be receptive to their concerns and criticisms. And by receptive to their concerns and criticisms, that means that we will use that to make any changes to the policy that are required, to make the policy more effective for the workplace, and to address anything that is outstanding, or anything that we didn't think of while we were drafting this policy. Because as with, you know, we're not perfect. So it is possible that while we think we've thought of everything and pored over every detail, that we missed something. And that happens from time to time. So we rely on our staff across the corporation to bring that to our attention. And if they do, and it requires a substantive change to this policy, we would bring it back to council's attention for your consideration and approval. Does that clarify?
A whole lot.
Great.
A whole lot.
And I assure everyone, if, if it was a major oversight, I would not hesitate call meeting very soon, in between, before we meet again, if, if it warranted that. But I, I'm quite satisfied with what is in front of us. Counsel Catchbar.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just one further point of clarification. Then Julie, are you looking today for endorsement of the policy or endorsement of the policy in principle?
Endorsement of the policy.
And we'll take it on good faith that if changes are required, you'll bring them to us.
Absolutely.
And I, I want to echo that. If we need to meet again in between before next meeting, we'll be here. I don't foresee that, but I, I won't hesitate if it's necessary. Do you have a mover? We have a seconder? Are you prepared to vote? I will call the question. All in favor? Looking hard, that is unanimous. I thank you for that. And again, I want to underline an odd style. Difficult, a lot of, lot of work. Appreciate it. Got all the reports, or I missed one?
We do need our two. The sequel. Very quickly before.
Oh, yes, the economic, Mayor Joe Preston and I have spoke several times. Sounds like his workload is extreme at the city. We would try to meet, and it has not worked. And I guess I've been a little chaotic last week getting ready for Saturday, but actually staff have been very busy. So we're asking your indulgence to post, defer this. I hope you understand that, and it's not a case we don't want to. It's been hard to match calendars, et cetera, but I'll take some of that responsibility. But.
Your motion.
A two-thirds majority vote pursuant to your procedural bylaw in order to defer that to the next meeting. So we intend to present that to you, Brian and I, on September the twenty-eighth.
All right. So I'll move. Okay, so a mover, and I think Ed was first, so mover and seconder. And I will call the vote. All in favor? Thank you. You let me off the hook. I appreciate that.
They need a break.
Yes, take a five-minute break, and I certainly support that. Thank you.
To new hires being fully vaccinated. Since that time, there's been a change to Directive Three. Directive Three now allows long-term care homes the option to remove the mandatory education option. And that does align with the hospital directive of Directive Six. So some hospitals have already moved to that mandatory direction, and others have remained with the education component. Next, I wanted to provide an update on our current vaccination stats in the homes. So you'll see on the slide there that the residents have received their third dose, so they've received their booster shot. I'm very pleased about that. So they all received that last week. There, it says greater than ninety percent in us because we have a few staff, or sorry, few residents that are new admissions, so they aren't quite at that timeframe of being able to qualify for their third dose. And there is a few residents across our homes that have elected not to be vaccinated. And then for staff vaccination rates at each home, Elgin Manor is currently at eighty-nine percent, Bobbiar Villa is at ninety-two percent, and Terrace Lodge is currently at seventy-five point six percent. Across the three homes, we do have a few individuals that are partially vaccinated, so they've had their first dose, and they're awaiting their second dose. Additionally, on August twenty-sixth of this year, there was a press release for announcement of a seniors' care coalition. Five of Canada's largest for-profit operators of long-term care homes, so Chartwell, Responsive Group, Rivera, Extendicare, and Sienna Senior Living, now will require their staff to be fully vaccinated against COVID- nineteen. Those staff that are not fully vaccinated by October twelfth will be placed on an unpaid leave of absence. Since that time, some municipal homes and not-for-profit long-term care homes have also made the transition to a mandatory vaccination policy. As we enter Wave Four, and outbreaks in long-term care homes are beginning to happen again, policy discussions are also happening at many long-term care home tables. So when we talk about a mandatory policy or not having a mandatory policy, there are risks to both. If we update the policy to a mandatory policy, we'll need to very carefully consider our staffing plan and our ability to maintain quality resident care. A backup staffing plan will definitely be required, as staffing agency support may be required. When we look at staffing agency support, we know that costs will increase. Those costs will increase based on wages, fees, guarantees, mileage, and accommodation, particularly because we are rural homes. If we do not have a mandatory policy, Julie has spoken already to the provincial legislation, which mandates that we ensure that health and safety of our staff. So is there a risk there? Additionally, outbreaks are still occurring in long-term care homes. As of September ninth, there were seven outbreaks in long-term care homes across the province. I am aware that one of those homes had sixteen active resident cases last week, with two resident deaths, and six active staff cases. So that's some information for council. The recommendation today is that staff be directed to prepare a draft long-term care homes mandatory vaccine policy for consideration by council at its meeting on September twenty-eighth. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Michelle. Questions for Michelle? Comments? Go ahead, Ed.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Michelle, the proposed policy that you're going to be developing, delivering, is it going to include the education component?
So the proposed policy that I'm looking for will be a mandatory vaccine policy. It will align with the new Directive Three, which basically gives us the option to remove the education piece. So yes, it will, or sorry, no, it will not include.
Not include the education. Okay. Counsel Purcell.
Just a question, if, and requires an opinion, I guess, but if we just use the same policy we just approved for everybody else in the county, all other members of the employment group, would that not be allowed for? Do you feel strongly that we should have a mandatory vaccination policy in the home setting?
We got a comment from Julie.
After you, Mr. Warden to Counsel Purcell. I'll take that one because we are hesitant to make too many comments at this point in time until we've had an opportunity to consider what all of our options are and what the best options are in, that will allow for the best quality resident care and ensure alignment with all ministry and public health guidelines. So we'd, we'd rather not speculate at this point about whether the, the policy that was just adopted by council would be appropriate for our long-term care home staff, if that's okay.
But I'm a little more confused now than, because we're, I believe we're being asked to ask you folks to put together a mandatory one, where I wonder, or I, I get the gut feeling that the step-by-step progression makes more sense, that if we just were to apply what we approved today to the homes now, modify it later, if that doesn't bump the increase, I, I look at the numbers, you know? When you get up to ninety, over ninety percent at Bobbiar Villa, and you're pushing ninety-eighty-eight or something like that.
Eighty-nine percent.
Eighty-nine percent at Elgin Manor. You know, we have one problem area, but we have two, basically, have reached that herd immunity, if you believe the science, where you're never going to get a hundred percent or, or get much past that. So I, I'm, I'm just wondering, and it kind of gets back at what we talked about before, about creating two groups and making this political as opposed to pure science, you know, pure health care. If, you know, I realize we've got a lot of vulnerable people in our homes, but we also have a lot of vulnerable people use our libraries, predominantly seniors, et cetera, to a large degree, and children who are unvaccinated to a large degree. So I, I'm not saying no, I just, I just think it would make sense, and I'm open to challenge to apply the same policy across the board. And then if we find we still have a problem with implementation execution in one area, then we can look at modifying or dealing with it at that time.
Comment, Julie?
Sure. So through you, Mr. Warden, to members of council, specifically Counsel Purcell. I'll try to keep this very simple. Council approved a policy in June twenty-twenty-one to support a vaccine policy that includes the provision of mandatory testing for staff. And if staff disclose that they have their vaccine, then they, after the fourteen-day waiting period, they aren't subject to daily testing anymore. Within our current policy is a provision that requires mandatory education for those who fail to disclose, or so, or do not have, declare that they do not have their vaccine. So I would argue that the policy that's currently in place in the homes is very similar to what council passed today. What we're recommending to council is that we act a policy that more closely aligns with new directives coming from the ministry, which is to take a bit of a more aggressive stance to try to get those vaccine numbers up in our homes. And that is what we're seeing some private sector homes doing and some of our regional municipal operators do. So we're, we're suggesting something that is, that builds upon the policy that you previously approved in June. Does that clarify?
Yeah, and I, I recognize that, but I think the peer pressure of making it more universal and treating all of our employees the same, even though the setting is a more dangerous setting, because of the vulnerability of the, the patients or the residents. I'm, I'm just wondering, you know, where, if it's time to take away the carrot and jab them that hard at this present time, there's, unfortunately, it is, it is a political issue now, where it should be just a health and safety issue. And I think the turmoil around the federal election, a whole bunch of things like that. I recognize you're giving us just basically a heads up. Then you're going to bring it back at the next meeting anyway. So I, I don't have a problem with you doing that work. I just question whether the impact of rolling it out across the whole county, what we already basically have for the homes, might have a positive impact on the rest of the staff because then at least everybody feels like, oh, we're all in the same boat. We should be rowing in the same direction. So I just, I, I'm not ready to vote against it because you're going to bring it back in two weeks or so after the elections and things, and the way things are changing so rapidly with politics and everything else around all of this, but.
Julie?
If I may, Mr. Warden, I'll just note that if council consents to having staff draft this policy, it in no way means that you have to approve the policy once it's presented. So I think this is research that is important for our team to do, regardless of what the actual policy looks like. So this is, these are interim steps we would have to do anyways. This isn't added work for us. We are just essentially offering a heads up that this is something we'd like to bring back to you for your consideration.
Counsel Jager first, then Counsel French.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So can we clarify what that resolution was that you were proposing? Because maybe that's what's causing, I know for me, there's confusion. I think we were about to approve that you go out and write a mandatory policy, but I'm also hearing that perhaps, no, we're, we're just directing staff to go revise and consider options. What is the resolution?
So the recommendation is that staff be directed to prepare a draft long-term care home mandatory vaccine policy for consideration by council at its meeting on September twenty-eighth, twenty-one. So maybe it needs to say to align with the changes in Directive Three or, or not.
That, and that we would rescind the previous vaccination policy at that time.
Right.
So it keeps that policy in place, and we would come to you with a new policy that better aligns with ministry guidelines.
So if I may, Mr. Warden, so could we remove, just because it feels like it's already predetermined what you want, right? Where I'm hearing that you're going to go back and in fact, write something that aligns with ministry directives. So could we just say that? So that staff be directed to revise a policy to better align, and whether that means it will be mandatory? I don't know.
Good.
I guess it doesn't really matter in the end because we can define it.
After you, Mr. Warden. I definitely hear what you're saying. The main difference would be that we are proposing that we draft something that makes vaccines mandatory in the homes. So that is in essence what we are proposing.
Right.
And when it comes to ensuring alignment with our ministry guidelines and all legislated requirements, we do so on a regular basis anyways. That is part of our ongoing review. So perhaps I wasn't clear when I indicated, you know, part of this is the review of our legislative requirements, but at the end of the day, what we are proposing is that council does contemplate making vaccines mandatory in our homes.
That'll be the, what I heard, that'll be the recommendation, then it'll be up to this council to approve it or not. So the recommendation is predetermined that it will be mandatory, but will still be the one.
Yeah, draft.
Say yes or no to it.
Yeah. Fair enough.
Okay. Mary, I think you had a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm in favor of this because this is what I like to see. So we actually have time to look at this. Staff has time to look at it. Everyone has an opportunity. People can reach out to you if they have questions. I'm in favor of doing it this way. This is the way I like to do things, so we can actually think about it and have time to prepare and, and get those questions answered.
Duncan, did I see your hand up?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Warden. As you had mentioned, the private sector seems to be going, and the ministry is directing the fact that mandatory vaccinations, and I think, take it that that's eliminating the rapid testing that's been going on.
Yes, it would eliminate it, except for our visitors that are not fully back.
Yes, it would eliminate it except for our visitors that are not fully vaccinated coming into the homes.
So that being said, is there any organizations that have already implemented this and got to the point that they have individuals that are so entrenched against the vaccine that they have elected to go on unpaid leave?
Yes. I don't have the statistics for you today, but I can do a bit of research.
I would think that that in itself will be part and parcel of your overall investigation as to what the, the impact that that could or could not make on the overall operations of the home. Yet to be determined.
Counselor Martin, go ahead.
I would just move the recommendation, Michelle.
You have a seconder, Deputy Warden Menel. Discussion over. I'll call the vote. All in favor, please. Carried unanimously. Thank you. I believe that is all our reports, is it? Miss Danny? Okay. Next up is council correspondence. Items for consideration. We have a letter from the township of Malahide regarding road safety concerns at the intersection of Ron McNeil Line and Imperial Road.
I have a recommendation for council's consideration. Be it resolved that staff be directed to review the intersection of Ron McNeil Line and Imperial Road to determine if any safety enhancements could be implemented during the reconstruction of Imperial Road and the completion of the county's transportation master plan, and that staff report back to council with their findings.
See a lot of heads nodding with that recommendation. Everyone satisfied with that? Do we need staff tracks or is that a?
It would be good to vote on.
Okay. Counselor Jagair and Deputy Warden Menel. Ready for the vote? All in favor, please. Again, that carries. Thank you. Items for information consent agenda. Do we need to take them individually or all together?
Unless there are questions or concerns.
They're for your consideration. Anyone happy to do it all at once? Seeing a lot of heads nodding. Motion received. Motion received from Counselor Jones, seconded by Counselor Ketchabaw. Ready to vote? All in favor, please. Again, that carries. Thank you. Other business. Statements, inquiries by members. Go ahead, Counselor Martin.
The one question I would have is I was contacted by one of our library employees, wondering if we wanted to do something September 30th with the Port Stanley Library. Was told that both the Dutton and West Lauren libraries were already planning an event for that reconciliation thing. Staff at Central Ogden thought I should at least run this through the county before we approve it because it's county staff, county library.
Just to clarify, so library staff approached local staff to?
Approached me.
Oh, approached you. Three, Mr. Warden to Counselor Martin. I can't comment on that specifically. I don't know the details, but what I can say is that we are working with the local administrators group to kind of take a joint, joint approach as much as possible to truth and reconciliation awareness programming through our library branches on September 30th and other, there's a potential for joint communications associated with this day across the county as well. So we're working together on that. And certainly if Central Elgin wants to have libraries do some enhanced programming and we can support those efforts, we'd be pleased to do so. So.
This was the employee talk that there was a staff person who would like to do stories, like reading, it would be outdoors, they would do button making, like they had various activities that they were going to do and they would do it outdoors. So I, they just wanted to know if we would like to take that opportunity or not. So as I say, our staff told me I should at least run it.
Yes, and I'm glad you did because it is unusual that we would, we would run any library programming through local councillors, so our local mayors. So we'll take that feedback back, but I can confirm that we have exciting activities planned through our library branches throughout the month of September. And part of our programming does include September 30th.
Thank you.
Further, further statements? Counselor Purcell?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. To all the members of county council, I'd like to officially let you know today that I intend to, or I am seeking the position of warden for next year, the last year of the mandate for this particular council. And I would sincerely appreciate your support and your votes. And all I can do is I will promise I will do as good a job as I possibly can for you if you're nice enough to let me have the opportunity. So I just wanted to officially let everybody know. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Bob. Notice a motion. See none? Matters of urgency?
I do have one, a new one.
Certainly, go ahead.
That I haven't spoken to you about in advance.
I love surprises.
I would recommend that we have an additional item for closed session regarding, I don't know if I can say then the title. Maybe I'll just say a legal matter.
Do we have, called a gas tax property?
Yes.
Do we have, do we agree with this? Or just you're, you're just informing us?
We need a vote.
Okay. You need a vote? Do we need a motion? Yes, we do. Counselor McPhail?
I'll move in addition to the closed item.
Thank you for that. Bob seconds that. All in favor, please. You have another item on the agenda. Okay. Items, matters of urgency. Hope none. Good. And I guess we're ready for closed session. And need a mover and seconder for that to move into closed session? Deputy Warden Menel, seconded by Counselor Ketchabaw. Call the vote. All in favor? And that carries, so. Give us.
All in favor. We are in closed session.
Did I do something wrong?
In line, left.
Okay, yeah, we want to do it again?
It's okay, it's recorded. The clerk, yeah, we'll make sure it's reflected in a minute.
So we are in open session? Welcome back. First item is, oh, wait till.
That's okay. We can proceed. For closed session item number one, which was gas tax property, be it resolved that staff be directed to communicate with central authorities to advocate for revisions to the oil and gas licensing process.
By Jones, seconded by McPhail. Any discussion? All in favor? That carries. Thank you. Next?
For closed session item number two, which was human resources, be it resolved that the report from the Director of Human Resources be received and that staff proceed as directed.
Still move by Jagair, seconded by Ketchabaw. Call the vote. All in favor? Carries. Thank you. Next?
For closed session item number three, which was litigation matters, be it resolved that the report from the county solicitor be received and that staff proceed as directed.
Seconder, please. French, Jones, ready for the vote? All in favor? Carries. Thank you.
For closed session item number four, I would just note that Counselor Martin was not present and the item under consideration was property matters. Recommendation is be it resolved that the report from the General Manager of Engineering, Planning and Enterprise, Deputy CAO, be received.
Mover and seconder, please. Menel, Purcell, ready for the vote? All in favor? Carries. Thank you.
Closed session item number five, emergency services. Be it resolved that the report from the administrative officer be received.
Moved by Jones, seconded by French. Discussion? All in favor? Carries. Thank you.
For closed session item number six, which was awards, not application, be it resolved that the report from the chief administrative officer be received and that staff proceed as directed.
Discussion? Mover, seconder? McPhail, Jagair? All in favor? Motion to?
Adopt recommendations.
Motion to adopt recommendations from the committee of the whole. Moved by Jones, seconded by Purcell. Ready for the vote? All in favor? Carries. Thank you. Bylaws?
Get a first, second, and third read of Bylaw 2134, being a bylaw respecting the permitting, regulating, and governing of filming on property owned by or under the jurisdiction of the Corporation of the County of Elgin.
Moved by? Jones, Jagair? All in favor? Carried. Next?
Get a first, second, and third read of Bylaw 2135, being a bylaw to confirm proceedings of the municipal council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin at the September 14th, 2021 meeting.
By French, seconded by McPhail. All in favor? Carries. Thank you. Getting close to the end. Two very, very quick things. I want to mention the golf tournament. If I'd had another coffee, I would have earlier on under my activities. It was a fabulous day, fabulous day. $20,000. And I have to thank staff. You know, they arranged good weather. Attendance were sold out. We got some great staff. So if you see some of those people, tell them great job. I, it's a memory I'll share for a long time. The other quick thing, Board of Health meeting on Thursday, Dr. Locke announced her retirement, if you haven't heard. So maybe just a simple personal email. She's, she's been a trooper. Better off because she was there the last year and a half. So she's going to be around till March. But if you think about it, I think, wish her well. And that's all I got. So I want to thank everyone. It's been a long day. We've earned our money today. A lot of good discussion. Thank you for your attention and always stay safe. Need a motion to get out of here. Purcell, Jones, all in favor? I thought it'd be unanimous. We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.